Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of Villarica this March the 12th, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We will have our invocation by Councilmember Shirley Marchman, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Rarely in a mayor or an elected official's time is a mayor or elected official, they get to honor a group of young ladies that we're going to honor tonight. And I'm not going to preach to y'all, but most of y'all, some of y'all know, I know the coach knows, that I spent almost thirty-four years of my life in recreation around young people. So, I have a passion for what you do, for what recreation means, for what competition means. And I'm just going to say a very, very few words, and then I'm going to read a proclamation. We are so proud of y'all. And we're going to let everybody recognize y'all in just a few minutes. But I just wanted to share a few things. I remember back when I first started in recreation, I was a part of the East Marietta Astros that won the World Series from Marietta many years ago. And I remember that feeling in the county. And I remember how it felt to be a part of that group and know those young men, two or three whom went on to play professional ball. But it was an honor to be a part of a county, and the county really rallied behind the team. And so, that's what you've done for this city in a large extent. I saw purple everywhere I went for the last two or three weeks. Everyone was wearing purple. And everywhere was talking, "Wow, have you heard about the girls? Wow, thirty-two and oh, is that even possible?" And I'll be honest with you, in all my years as a recreator and working with young people, that is a record that may never be broke again. I hope it starts. I hope it starts with y'all's next game, but it may never be broken again. But I want to leave you with something. A lot of you know that I played baseball, and I've tournament finished, so I'm still in the competition mode. And it occurred to me just a few years ago, and I hope you'll see this too one day in the not-too-distant future. You may have lost a game, but you're not going to remember that twenty years from now. What you're going to remember is the journey. You're going to remember the trip to the journey. You're going to remember all the friends, the coaches. I can tell you, from the time I could walk, I played baseball. I can't tell you most of my win-loss records. I was a pitcher. And you would think a pitcher would know that. But I can't tell you how many games we lost and how many games we won. But I can tell you who my coaches are. And I can tell you who the good coaches are, and the ones that took a little time with me. And I was a little kid. I was the kid that never got picked on the kickball team. And so, I had coaches that took me under their wing. We'll let this train go by. Not going to compete with Norfolk Southern. But I want y'all to remember that. It's the journey that you're going to remember. Don't dwell on the loss, because it was just one loss, but the journey that you were on for thirty-two games, leading all the way back to last year, is just absolutely amazing. Will you give these girls a hand? Let me just...[265.14][265.14](Applause) And Coach, I want to say this. Where's the coach? I know her. There she is, back there. She loves y'all. She loves this community. And I see it when she talks. I see it when she coaches. I see it when you win, and I see it when you lose. And you never changed. And thank you for that, Coach.[292.52][292.52](Applause) And now, I'm going to read a proclamation. And after that, I'm going to ask that the team please come forward, and the coaches, and I want to get some photos with y'all, so. Whereas it is fitting that the Mayor and Council should recognize the accomplishments of those outstanding athletic teams that work hard, display brilliant skill, and demonstrate exceptional dedication and diligence to their sport, and whereas the Villarica Girls' Basketball Team has displayed these extraordinary qualities as they recently completed another remarkable season, and whereas the Lady Wildcats prided themselves on teamwork with each player placing the needs of the team above individual honors, and whereas the Lady Wildcats compile a phenomenal record of thirty-two wins and only one loss, earning its first appearance in the state championship in the past fifty years, and whereas the team garnered many accomplishments throughout the season, including winning their regular season regional championship, and whereas the Villarica Girls' Basketball Team is highly regarded as one of the best teams in the state, and whereas this team set numerous school records during the course of the season, including most wins in a season with thirty-two victories, and whereas not only do these young ladies on this team possess tremendous athletic skill, but they are model citizens as well, and whereas the members of this outstanding team are, and if I mess y'all's name up, just please forgive me, DeKyla Cofield, T. Wyndham, Kendall Coleman, Takara Johnson, Sinead James, Naya Hensman, Deja Merrill...
(Inaudible)
Deja, got it. Deasia, okay. Elia Hensman, Deanna Parks, Hannah Goen, Marley Crouch, Erin Mayberry, and Kaylee Bailey, and whereas the Lady Wildcats are guided by the expert coaching of a highly seasoned, respected head coach, Tammy Norad, and whereas the team enjoyed the generous support of the Wildcat administration, faculty, staff, students, and fans, and whereas the athletic excellence displayed by this phenomenal basketball program is a tribute to the hard work, dedication, and perseverance of both coach and players alike, and deserves special recognition, be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Villarica, that we honor and commend the Villarica Lady Wildcats Basketball Team on an outstanding season, and wish them well in all their future endeavors. Please join me in thanking these young ladies.[465.65][465.65](Applause) Now, if y'all will come up forward. I'll just kind of make a little semicircle right here. Coach, you get somewhere near the middle, and I'm going to stand next to you. If that's okay? Okay?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Now, y'all are certainly encouraged to stay and watch this democratic process as we go through the rest of the meeting, but if you would like to leave, I can certainly understand that as well.
They chose to leave. Wouldn't you? Smart ladies.
Yeah. That's going to be a hard act to follow, I'm just telling you that. You know, and I usually do this little speech. Y'all are going to have to bear with me for just a minute, because, you know, winning and losing means a lot. And most of you have heard me say this, and certainly my wife hears me say it just about every day, but, you know, when I see these kids getting scholarships and going to college, that's what it's all about. It's about opportunity. That's what it's about. And so, you know, yes, it's important that we won thirty-two games in a row, and yes, it's important we made it to a state championship. But every time I see one of these young people get a scholarship to a college, I get it. And that's what we all should keep in mind, so. Okay. Enough preaching. Item number two, Public Safety Memorial Park. It is my honor to introduce to you a person that really, everybody, most of you know in this room, but does so much for this county. I would like to ask for Chief Deputy Brad Robinson with the Carroll County Sheriff's Department to please come forward. While he's passing this information out, for those of you that don't know, I can tell you from personal experience, this man has meant the world to the City of Villarica from a public safety standpoint. And anytime we've ever had a problem up here, he's just one phone call away. That's what he always tells me, and he follows through and does that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And it's a privilege to be here and speak to you guys in Villarica. And if you don't know, the coach used to be a Robinson before she got married.
Did not know that.
There's a lot of those Robinsons out there, but she's one that's actually kin to me. But, you know, the other day, when they come to me and they ask about one of the deputies escorting the team down to play the championship, it was our privilege to do that. So, we're proud of Villarica and the Wildcats, and certainly that's in part of Carroll County. But there's one thing I wanted to come and speak to you guys a little bit about, is since nine eleven, September the eleventh, every since then, people want to recognize public safety when it becomes that month. You know, it's like churches come to us, what can we buy? What can we bring? And it got to be kind of, a lot of people coming at us, they wanted to come to the police department. They want to come maybe to EMS or somewhere else. So, a year or so ago, we thought about, why don't we have one, let's unite together, maybe one event? That started last year in September. It's the second Friday from now on of every year. And the only place we could have it last year was there, we thought would be quite fitting, was at the memorial, the Veterans Memorial Park, Carroll County Veterans Park. There was a lot of talk prior to that about, we'd love to have a public safety memorial park. That would be very fitting to have this type of event around September. So, we got to talking, we got a committee together, and we put none of the chiefs of police on the committee. Definitely wanted some worker bees. I'm sorry. I appreciate him getting me on the agenda. But no, what we did is we got together, Gary Thomas is also on the committee, and you can see from the list here, the names that are on that committee. It's a fairly small group. But what we're looking to honor is law enforcement, EMS, 911, and firefighters. That's what basically is considered public safety here. And what we're going to do, if any of you guys were there last September, what we did was actually have a groundbreaking ceremony. Chief Mansour was part of that. It's going to be adjacent to that Veterans Park there, over there close to the Health Department there in Carrollton. Page two is a drawing of similar, what that park is going to look like. That circle in the middle is going to be what's called, and I'm just a country boy myself, but it's called an oblist. Is that right, Gary? Oblist. But that's basically, in my terminology, a statue. And what we do there is, the statue is going to have a sub-base, a base, a sub-base, and on that sub-base is, there's going to be four sides, and that's going to represent the EMS, one-side fire, law enforcement, and 911. And, you know, I've done a lot of research in the past year, and looked at, of course, I recognize that just from pictures of Mr. Holt back in 1908, who sacrificed his life for public safety. And Robbie Bishop, of course, I was around at that time, 1999, remember it like it was yesterday, basically. We've had many officers, firefighters, and police officers and sheriff's deputies. We've had eleven in the past, I'll say, a little over a hundred years that's passed on, that sacrificed their lives. But what we're basically asking for, we've gotten a quote, we've gotten about half the money through Carroll County, and because Chris Dobbs is with the City of Carrollton Police Department, we approached them first, got twenty-five thousand from the City of Carrollton, fifty thousand from Carroll County. And I called Chief Mansour last week, and I asked him, could Villarica do something for this Veterans, this Memorial Park, public safety park? There's going to be, right now, and I pray there's not any more officers that go on that wall, but right now, there's two from Villarica. The whole entire project, from start to finish, is going to be right at a hundred and fifty thousand. The last page is going to be the actual service from last year, where we honored those officers. And actually, during that ceremony, we asked each police chief to recognize an officer in their department as well. Chief Mansour came, recognized an officer there, I think it was Sergeant Kevin Carroll, if I'm not mistaken. They took part in that ceremony. And we're going to continue to hope this ceremony gets bigger and better every year. But I'm thinking that by this September, we're going to have that park pretty much in place. There might be some bushes that need to be placed, landscaping and so forth, but we plan to have the park in place. But I guess my asking for you guys today is, please consider contributing to the City of Villarica to that park.
Any questions, Council? Chief?
We're asking for the city to make a donation, but we also don't mind the public. If they want to make a donation, it would definitely help any of the businesses in town, any of the people that want to make this donation. And as Brad said, we've been just welcomed, you know, people thank us every day for the service, and thank us for what we do. And, you know, it means a lot to us that they're willing to do that, and that kind of, this is a way to step up and show us that you do appreciate what our officers have done, and the officers that we've lost. I was there when we lost Billy Giles in Carrollton. He was killed in Carrollton, and I was actually working there, and had to go out and work the scene, and knowing that his wife and kids were at home, and not knowing, you know, yet, that what... It's just, it's pretty horrendous of an event, and I'm like Brad, I hope it never happens again. But we do need to let, you know, our public safety folks know that we do appreciate them. So, we are asking that, you know, the city makes a donation along with, you know, anybody else that would like to. So, thank you.
Let me ask you, Chief, if somebody was going to make a donation, who would they make it to?
The check would be made out to Carroll County Public Safety Memorial, Carroll County Public Safety Memorial Park. And that's where it's going to all go. And Brad and them have done an outstanding job getting this together, and we appreciate them putting their work in together. And I tried to get on there, and they wouldn't let me on the list.
They said you got work.
This has been an easy task, because it's something I think all of the law enforcement and public safety would be able to visit, as among the visitors that come through, because we're going to have all the names inscribed on that statue, oblist, that we have. So, I think it's going to be, if you've ever been to that Veterans Park, very impressive. And the same person that has gotten the granite and all for that park, there's a park in Tallapoosa. If you've ever been to Tallapoosa and seen that park, this park will resemble those parks as well, with the black granite. We're going to have benches around, lighting under the benches, flag. It's going to be something that'll stand out.
Council, you don't have an agenda item on this to approve it, but is it suffice it to say, do we need to ask our city manager to look at that and bring us back a proposal at the next council meeting?
Yep. You can do that, please.
Thank you, Chief Deputy Robinson. That's what I always, I've always called you that, so. And thank you for all that you do for the city and for the county in general. We are blessed in the city to have a police force that we can trust, and that our people trust, keeps us safe. But we're also blessed to have a county. When we're traveling elsewhere in Carroll County, I feel just as comfortable as I do when I'm in the city.
Well, I appreciate that, because I consider all of us family. And if I ever need to reach out to Villarica, Chief Mansour is always there, and I thank that. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Council, you have the agenda before you. I would like to ask that we amend the agenda to add Section G. You have that on the printed version, but that was not advertised, so we need to add that to the agenda, and also that we add executive session.
Mr. Mayor, we do have executive session for the purpose of real estate, but I want to add the personnel piece to that, if we could add that. So, I would make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the addition of Section G, and with the addition of the second item of personnel for the executive session.
Have a motion of second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay? We have reached the public comments portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to give a public comment, please do so at this time. State your name and address for the record, and please let me see your remarks for three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Barber, John Hennaback, 3106 Golfer's Way. Couple of comments. You have a busy agenda tonight, particularly the first item. There are several zoning changes that we discussed, planning and zoning. I found them very difficult when we first approached them, and hopefully, Mr. Elliott will walk you through that. We felt that was almost necessary to consider all three simultaneously to better understand them, but that's up to you and the council. But I would like you to discuss and consider the delay or the change in zoning delay that Tanner is asking for. We approved it, but I really think it's something that perhaps ought to be discussed by council. So, that's one item. Another one that is of concern to me, and this just came up at the, that I first heard about it at the last council meeting, and that was the roundabout for Connors Road and Veterans Highway. I am not in favor of that. I don't think that's a particularly dangerous intersection at present. I don't think there's been that many accidents there. But I think putting in a roundabout might make it more dangerous, because you're going to have traffic streaming out of Villarica, banging into a roundabout. Plus, I also, I'm not sure, couldn't tell from the layout, how it's going to work in proximity to the railroad crossing. I think that's going to be an issue. And I think it's going to put a lot of traffic onto Connors Road when that truck, east-west truck organization moves in, because trucks coming from there to go on I-20 are going to go up Connors Road to get onto I-20. So, I am not particularly in favor of that roundabout. The last item I wanted to talk about is the Welcome Center. I'm in favor of the Welcome Center, but it's been a real bear for the city, and it's costing us a lot of money. I'm not sure that we have any idea how much money that is going to cost us. But I really hate to see narrowing of streets to accommodate parking for the Welcome Center. If there's not a better way to do the parking, and I don't know what it is, because there's no facility around the Welcome Center. But really consider that, because that could be a real issue and a real concern. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, Michael Young...
Michael, could you wait just a second?
Oh, the train. How many is it a day?
Enough.
Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive, Villarica. My comments are about the last city council meeting. There was a lot of discussion around the events in the city, and how much it costs, and what it was for, and who it brought in, and it kind of surprised me. I, you know, the city council voted for a budget for Main Street Advisory Board to host all of these events, and it wasn't just the ones there. There are a bunch of other events, like the leadership luncheons and stuff like that. And I was surprised that there wasn't a general knowledge of what these bands do. I would encourage you to reach out to the committees you've got. If you read in the packet, and you've got questions about something costing fifty thousand dollars, you've got several outstanding committees in the city that deal with that, and Janet doesn't work in a vacuum. We talk about that at the Main Street Advisory Board, or if you're on a cemetery commission, you talk about the cemetery. I would encourage you to reach out to the committees for information about things you have questions on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You don't see me up here very often, do you? Randy Muller, 129 Main Street on Corktown Main, Other Side Restaurant. I just want to come up and say thank you for everything the council's doing, and hope they'll continue doing it for the businesses downtown. When we have these special events, what the business does for our restaurant is tremendous. And, you know, it's a big thing for the city to do what they do. And I just want to say thank. Sit.
Thank you, sir. Don't be a stranger.
Hey, I'm Tanya Tentry. I am, I live at 115 Old Stone Road, but I'm here on behalf of my dad. I think last week, all of you got an email from me regarding his house on 885 Dallas Highway. And we are concerned with, and I know Tanner has said that they will put a fence up, but one thing that I'm worried about is, part of what is behind him is the library, and nobody seemed fit to put a fence up with that. I know Tanner, I think, gifted that to the city, if I'm understanding that correctly. So, he is having people that are coming onto his land, and the problem that we see with that is, it's a liability. If someone falls and breaks their leg, they're going to sue my dad. They're not going to sue the city. So, I want to have something in writing, you know, before anything is actually placed, anything else is built over there, that they're going to put a fence around his house. He has the library sign, and I know Leslie, I've talked to her, she has explained that that's perfectly legal for them to have that. But, you know, this is a residential area that is being approached upon with big business. And then, you know, he can't watch TV in the living room because it's got flashing lights on one side, and then somebody allowed the pharmacy to come in, and he has a sign that's on the other side that goes through the bedroom. The thing is, is we received a registered letter with this new thing, but never has anything else been sent out so that we could come and voice our opinion. So, I just would like for y'all to take into consideration, he's a long-term resident that's paid taxes for years to the City of Villarica, and we would just like for someone to take into consideration his privacy. And, you know, he's an older gentleman. He wants to get out in the yard and work and, you know, burn his leaves, and he gets a permit, and then someone comes over and says, "Hey, you can't do that, because you're blowing smoke in our facility." You know, that's just, it's not good. So anyway, I appreciate your time, and I'd appreciate it if we could have something in writing that this will be taken care of before they're given permission to build.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, Mayor and Counsel, Rhonda McCullers, Main Street Advisory Board. I am here tonight to ask you guys to please not table again our bans, to also consider that you approved all of this in the budget when you approved it, and to ask you to please respect your boards. You appointed us, and we don't take it lightly when we sit in a room in a meeting on Friday for an hour and a half to vote on these bans. Janet brings all the information to us. We consider it all. We consider the monies being spent. We feel like that we have a great board and that we have a lot of people in there that give their opinions. They don't always agree, so I think we have a great variety of people in there with opinions on these things. However, when it gets held up in city council for a month, this band is, they're not going to keep sitting on the sidelines saying, well, we're still waiting. And they're going to talk to each other and their fellow bands. They're going to get the word out, hey, don't deal with Villarica people because they will keep you hanging on. So I am just here tonight on behalf of the Main Street Advisory Board to ask you guys to please consider that we can't keep putting this off. And if you will, to please vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Francesca Scopiak, 1101 Rocky Branch Road. I'm actually here on behalf of my employer, Prip Pack. We're actually looking to do something, a little social responsibility, and we're very interested in Carroll County's Little Free Pantry. And we were just interested, wanting to know if Villarica would be willing to do something like that or if you guys have any plans to do anything as such, because we would be interested in sponsoring something along those lines. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carolyn Cox, 2860 East Highway 166, Carrollton, Georgia. I'm a part of the Main Street Board. I'm a business owner in the Villarica downtown area. I stand firm on a decision to vote on scheduled entertainment for year 2019. I voted on high caliber concerts, concert entertainment because I thought it would be beneficial to our, to the majority of our community and businesses in the Villarica area. Note that I said majority. I didn't say everybody was going to be pleased. Here are the facts and pros due to the 2018 schedule. Because the entertainment budget was approved well in advance in 2018, Main Street was able to get the word out. We were able to schedule and to play on the whims of participation by our community and community friends, which was overwhelming. When I say overwhelming, for example, Encore, the other side, ran out of food during the Atlanta Rhythm Section Concert, a great thing to happen, I think. Better planning by Encore was made for Mother's Finest Concerts, standing room only. We have our guests enjoying the parklets outside. Los Cowboys didn't run out of food, but they had standing room only, an hour wait or more. I'm not sure of the other businesses. I haven't had time to interview them, but these are the facts. Here are the cons with the 2019 schedule. April 27th is our first jazz festival for 2018. We cannot make advertisement or let the people know because we're on hold. Because we're at the ninth hour, what do we do? There's a two-edged sword when we're in wait. Because it is our ninth hour, there's no money being spent. Then next time in the budget, you'll say, well, you didn't spend the money this time, so what are you going to do about it? So I am pleading as a advisory board member, if I may ask, to resolve the issues with our decision to make the high caliber bands a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, Counsel, Cheryl Bell, 225 Raleigh Way. And I just want to say, I didn't come up here to say anything about the bands, but as a citizen, and I was thinking about this the last time you all talked about Ken Ford. We do need, I agree, we do need high caliber bands. You do have to pay a little more money for them. It helps, it's a good draw for the city and it's good for the citizens. And I wrote Ms. McPherson a note about that, especially with the, with the jazz band, West Georgia Jazz. We're trying to, it seems like the city's been trying to beef that one up for years. When it first came, there wasn't many people there. And so, and there wasn't, the groups that were there weren't really jazz jazz. And now it seems like you're trying to get better with that. And so we're hoping that that can get a larger turnout this year and any years to come. I'm up here about the streetlights at the trails at Charleston Place, which you're going to talk about in G tonight. We requested one additional streetlight. We have a dark space over there on Charleston Place, and one of my neighbors pointed it out to me. And so I did a code report, and me and Mr. Bobby Elliott have been going back and forth on it. And so I guess we're going to talk about it tonight. But I just do want to share with you that it's a security issue, it's a safety issue. I know that Georgia Power had a plan when they first developed our neighborhood, but they really didn't stick to that plan because the plan they had had a lot more lights than what we ended up getting because we lost our builder. And I was, I don't go out late that much at night, but I was out there the other night coming back home from something, and I just looked over that way, and you can hardly even see anything. So, you know, and there's the corner house there. And that's why I think it's dark, because you've got houses here, houses here, and then you've got this corner lot facing the other way. And that's what's causing the dark spot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Teresa Chalas with 150 Stone Street. We own the Stone Street Station building, and we're also tenants with the Olive Tree Restaurant and the venue. And when we bought the building, it was already in the process of being built, so we didn't buy already finished. And we had to put a high-dollar sprinkler system in there to later learn that we didn't have enough water pressure for that sprinkler system. So in the meantime, it has cost us double what it would normally cost to build out the buildings we have in there with double firewalls and other regulations to overcome the water issue. We still have 4,000 square feet available that we can't rent out. We also lost a million-dollar lease with Dialysis Center because of the water issue. So to stay afloat and not just give up and file bankruptcy, we dug into our pockets to stay afloat. And that pocket is funded by the Olive Tree. And so what, I need to continue funding that pocket. And the best way to do that is, we're very grateful for the Main Street for bringing visitors and activities down here to draw more people. I also had Olive Tree in Hyrum. We don't have a Main Street there, and you can really tell it because the city does nothing. It's a struggle. The downtown is pretty much a ghost town. We wanted to go to Woodstock and let them be our example. And if you've ever been there, that's a happening place, so is Carrollton. And I'd like to see Villarica be that. And with better crowds, better bands, you get better crowds, better people, more people. Thank goodness we have Holiday Inn. They provide a lot of business. And when people come for weddings at our venue, they ask where to stay. I was embarrassed before, but now we're upgrading. And my son is an officer here, but I'm not allowed to ask him questions. Hey, what's going on at this hotel, or what's going on here? But I can kind of see it with my own eyes that it's getting better. So I just want to encourage you to continue Main Street. They're doing a fabulous job because I've seen having a restaurant in a city that doesn't have it, how we have to struggle there. And I just wanted to encourage you to do better bans because you're going to see the outcome of it. It's going to be profitable for everybody. And if they come in and the store's closed, not just for us restaurants, but the stores closed, they say, I like that blouse, and I'm going to come back when it's open. And then they come back, and then they may stop for a beer here, or a dessert here, or a donut, which those are good, too. But I just want to thank the Main Street and thank you guys for having them and encourage you to continue doing what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wesley Whiteener, 635 South Street, Villarica. When I first came to, my first meeting here, city council meeting, I mentioned tiny homes. About possibly changing the rules and regulations on the, how many acres a person has to have to put a tiny home in the city limits of Villarica. Now I'm coming back to you and asking you why hasn't the certain bylaws has not changed on tiny homes? I'm just asking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Forgive me, I forgot to sign in. Renee Hooks, 303 Rock Mart Road. I'm actually coming to you about an issue that I actually spoke to Leslie about back in September. At the end of last summer, when the, when the city began to, began to check out all the pumps and all the water pressure things, I brought it to Bobby's attention that there was one at the end of the alleyway that is between my home and my neighboring home. They didn't even know it was there, so he was very happy to find out it was there. However, at the time, they dug a hole on either side of that. I'm not sure if it's a lift station or a pump, I'm not sure. Don't remember what he told me. However, there are two four-foot-deep holes on either side of that station. As of yesterday, they were full of water. In the fall, we had an animal fall into it and die. My concern and the city's concern should be that there is no caution tape. Leslie did offer to do that. However, my hope was that we could actually get that taken care of. Now, whether it needs a fence or caution tape, or if you're done with the testing, shouldn't that hole be filled? Because it's dangerous. I have toddlers that live around me. My own children are old enough, thankfully, that they wouldn't fall in, but a toddler wandering in there is dangerous. In addition to that, the day that those holes were dug, they cut down a massive amount of shrubbery off of the city alleyway and put it onto my property. The gentlemen who were out there did tell me that they would be out the next day to put it up to the street. However, almost a year later, it's still there. The dirt that was removed from the hole was put onto my property. I intended to print y'all pictures. I'm so sorry, I did not have time, rushed straight from work. But this is an issue that needs to be dealt with. It's an issue of safety. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no further public comment, we will move on to the regular meeting. And the first order of business is council updates.
I just want to say that that is the most number of people I've ever seen step up and speak about any one particular issue tonight. And I just want to say thank you to people who do come up here and speak in public comments. We do listen. I don't know the exact process that is followed to follow up with you, but I hope that it will be. Of course, we heard about Main Street, and we will take that up a little bit later today, so I'm not going to talk about that. But I do want to say that one of the common, even with this comment here, issues is with codes enforcement. So I want to make sure that we discuss and have some kind of a process in place to make sure that we are addressing these codes violations because they're becoming more and more of an issue, and it seems like we're not doing anything about it. So at least that's going to be the public perception, and it can be my perception just driving through town. So we have got to come up with something that allows us, as the governing body here, to know that codes are being looked at and that they're being enforced in the city. I'm not going to be on a soapbox. I mean, these, I try to respect this amount of time because I respect everybody's time here. That's all I'll say right now.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Since there was a lot of comments about the bans and that sort of thing, and I was the lone vote that particular night against what I would call a very expensive ban, we did, I have received a lot of emails and feedback back from people, and then tonight, some of the Main Street people. Let me just say, I really appreciate our board. Everybody that does that is a volunteer, and they could be doing a lot of other things, and they're giving time to the city. I will say that it's not that there's necessarily a right and wrong, but there's a fundamental different view of government and what government primarily exists for and what are its core responsibilities. And for me, and anybody that got my email would have seen this, the core responsibility of government is to do for people what they can't do for themselves and to provide those public safety, roads, the water and sewer. We can't do that from our house. We can't do those things. And a lot of my constituents that I have heard from seem to understand the concept that it's very hard to explain how we can spend, and I'll try to make this fairly brief, close to $100,000 in '17, about $92,000 in '18, but that was January to September, and then '18 and '19, another 12-month period, $133,000, primarily having to do with entertainment. And you have to understand this, with as much respect as I have for boards and everything else, we up here were elected by all the citizens, our particular citizens, from our ward, and ultimately, we're the only ones that answer to them. Staff doesn't answer to them. And the way we answer to them is because not only do we represent them, they decide if we stay in this seat or not. And if they want to take me out, that's okay. But I have a big struggle with spending those, those kind of dollars on entertainment, especially when I got the numbers on how much wasn't sponsored, when I have constituents calling me continuously about everything having to do with water pressure, to their yards washing away, to roads not having enough striping on them in the rain. People can do a lot of things for themselves. They cannot do those things. And we're not getting all those done yet. Somebody needs lights. You're one of about 50 places around that want lights. That's not saying you shouldn't get them. You're one of a bunch. I struggle with spending those things on that. I want our businesses to be successful, but to be honest, I could write them a check for all the extra business they did for a lot less than this. I want to have nice things downtown. We are not Swanee yet. We are not Woodstock yet. And I feel like for the majority of my constituents that that is a concern when we have basic government core responsibilities that we are struggling to accomplish, and yet we can spend $10,000 on a headliner, $8,500 on a headliner.
I'm going to reserve my rebuttal to that in comments till we get to that line item, since it's actually on the agenda. Anybody else? Okay. Tab A, governing body, approval of minutes. Counsel, you have the meeting minutes from the February 26, 2019 meeting. Are there any changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, February 26, 2019.
Have a motion of second to approve. All in favor? Unanimous? Tab B, community development, Bobby?
Lisa, can you put the map up?
David, let me just ask a question while he's doing that, a process question. We want to take these one at a time, and we've got it listed that way. Will there be public input on each of these one at a time? Is that how we would like to do that?
Yeah, I think by virtue of the fact that they are listed individually that they need to be, yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a rezoning request, tab RA-01-19. Tanner Medical Center Incorporated, 705 Dixie Street, Carrollton, Georgia. The request is to rezone the property located at 215 Old Stone Road from Rural Development RD to Office Institutional ONI for the purpose of medical facilities. The parcel number is V050110039. Consists of nine point Consists of 9.56 plus or minus acres. Current land use is Rural Development. Future land use is medical character area as designated by our future land use map. If you'll look at your map, it's the large piece to the far right, RA-01-19. It appears that our records indicate that it is indeed RD, Rural Development. Future land use map calls for that entire area to be medical character areas, which is consistent with what Tanner's doing in the whole area. Rezoning the property to Office Institutional would complement the existing institutional medical uses in the vicinity. The proposed zoning is consistent with the medical overlay district in the area. Proposed zoning is compatible with nearby zoning and the uses nearby. The subject property does have adequate public sewer, water, and gas facilities, and should have when developed. The proposed zoning could have a significant impact on Old Stone Road, but I'll interject this right here. Two days ago, I received a request from Tanner through Stacy Blackman to deed the entrance road into the library to the city of Villarica with a request that they could have one curb cut on the end of that street to access this tract of property. So in essence, all of the traffic concerning this right parcel will be accessed from Dallas Highway, not from Old Stone Road.
Where's the dumpster?
They plan on teeing in before the dumpster. The dumpster location will stay there, and they'll come off their entrance just before you get there to the right. And that will be coming probably at, that request will be coming at the next council meeting, maybe, if I can get it advertised. Based on our mapping systems, along with Carroll County, it doesn't indicate there's any streams on that track, but I understand that some neighbors came forth at the planning commission and indicated there is a small creek there.
Can I get Jim? My pad is saying I have no internet. I can't pull anything up.
But based on the fact that it's a small creek, the current development standards that we have in place will guide the development around that process, shouldn't have any environmental impacts. Tanner has also asked, as part of their application, they want to request the city provide a permanent waiver of lapse of zoning provision found in the Section 2.03B6 of the Unified Development Code. Tanner requests that if the city council approves Tanner's rezoning application, the city council permanently waive the time period requirement under Section 2.03B6 of the Unified Development Code for Tanner to establish the proposed use and initiate development before the failure of which would constitute consent for the city to initiate the process to revert the zoning back to the RD existing zoning. Further, in your packet and in my staff report, they've indicated that sometimes their planning process takes five years or so for them to get their project fully underway. That being the case, staff recommendation was, one, permitted use is limited to medical, dental, and professional offices. Number two, all improvements to be installed on the property prior to occupancy, which will happen anyway. Number three, a permanent waiver of the lapse of zoning be approved. Getting to, back to Ms. Gentry's comment, this particular parcel, if it goes from RD to ONI, which is a commercial zoning, it abuts to the residential zoning on Dallas Highway. There will be a buffer requirement. The code establishes that. It will be done in the development process. But that's certainly something the council can add.
This would be a good time for me to interject this. I get that, but I also get, since I live right around the corner from there, that they've been blasted by that sign that's been inoperable since the pharmacy opened. So I think Tanya has spoken to me about it, but I see it every night. Now, the sign works now, so now that the sign works, it'll look a little bit less bright, but just understand that those comments come from a place where people's, that hasn't happened in the past. There is no buffer, obviously, between her dad's property and the pharmacy, and there is no buffer between the library and her dad's property.
Well, we can't make them do...
I know you can. I'm just, I just wanted to, this would be the time for me to clarify that.
Well, for this tract that we're talking about, there will be a buffer, as long as I'm here, because I'll be reviewing it. Based, this application has been newly advertised. We received the one email comment from Ms. Gentry concerning her concerns about the area. Planning commission voted to approve this application four to one with the staff conditions, and the applicant is here.
Any questions of staff? I guess this is a staff-related question, but once again, we are facing a development with no transportation plan, and I've asked since last fall that we find the money to do a transportation plan. I hope that we get that done sooner rather than later, because this is going to impact folks, not only this development, but we're going to continue to grow. And I just would reiterate and reemphasize and ask again that we find the money to do a transportation plan citywide, so that we can be proactive rather than reactive.
I agree, ma'am.
I thought we fought for that traffic, that it got taken out. We said we need to have that. What's the traffic study?
What we talked about was paying for it out of the T-SLOSS if it passed, and it didn't, so we haven't been back in the budget cycle since then.
Maybe we need to add that to the agenda in two weeks. I would like for the council to take that up and to ask our city manager to try to find those funds. It's that important. The decisions we're making now are going to affect people 20 years from now and longer.
And why are those things not funded? We have one pot of money. We have got to tighten our belt in certain areas, because we cannot do the core fundamental things that we need to do. Traffic study, we need that.
Those things could have been funded.
It needs to be.
If we'd have just chose to fund it. We chose to wait on the T-SLOSS to pass and use that funding. That was part of our budget plan.
But we never knew the T-SLOSS. But to the whole buffer thing, is the reason we don't have buffers in the past, behind Tanner, you used to have citizens behind Tanner on that backside, there was only a chain-link fence with the little slat, so it wasn't a buffer. Is it because it wasn't in the code, so when the pharmacist came in and those sort of things, none of that was required because the codes were the old codes?
Let me just say that when I got here, inspections were practically never done. You know, I understand, but I can't control what happened in the past.
So it should have been there, even with the codes we had, it should have been done?
Yes. That part of the code has not changed in 10 years.
Okay. Well, then I guess the only thing I can say about that, you can't make somebody do something after the fact, but there might be a way to mitigate it. So if we can find a way to work together and find a way, if there's something we can do on our side, whether it's landscaping, if, I know we can't make them after the fact, encourage a business owner to mitigate their impact on the one, just as a neighborly thing to do, you know, just out of just being nice to one another and trying to make it a good place to live next to people. With the Tanner, and I'll just say this once, because it'll apply to all the ones, it's the traffic. You said there would for sure be a buffer, and unfortunately, because my tablet wasn't working here, I wasn't able to pull up something that I had highlighted about traffic, but I did write a couple notes having to do with, because they want a permanent waiver so that it doesn't lapse and return back to the previous zoning. I totally get that. If I were Tanner, I'd want the same thing. And I know that happens after a period of time if they don't begin to build. But there used to be something such as impact, say you want to put in a school, or, you know, a shopping center's going in, that's going to have an impact on traffic and other things, water, sewer. There were certain impact fees that sometime came along with that, so that for you to build this, you've got to help provide these other things. What can you tell us about that?
Impact fees have to be set by ordinance. We don't have it. Tom and I have talked about it several times on our water sewer issues that we're having to kind of help ease the burden of what we're going to have to borrow to pay for it. But impact fees, you can use them for virtually anything, transportation, water, sewer, storm drainage, but you've got to set it by ordinance. It has to be done. Those fees have to be established.
So when should we do that?
I want to ask you a question. It seems to me that that pharmacy and that neon light, that big bright light, came out of nowhere. I mean, it just appeared one day. When was that approved?
That zoning was in place for a long, didn't even come to y'all, because it was already zoned.
Well, that's my question.
It was permitted, gosh, probably two or three months before I came, October 30, 2017. I inherited that one.
Yeah, I understood that from your discussion. So one of my questions is, you've been here now since late 2017.
Yes.
And have you experienced that the city's been very good at five-year planning?
No, sir.
I'm going to say no.
No, sir.
So you put in here that staff would recommend that this permanent waiver on the lapse of zoning, when our UDC requires that this zoning laps after 12 months, why would staff recommend that?
You're missing the whole section. Doesn't automatically lapse. That's only if the council wants to initiate the lapse back.
Sure. But you're asking us to waive the ability to do that.
I was very surprised when Stacy Blackman sent this over, because in 45 years, I've never seen a city council revert a piece of zoning, ever.
So if it's unnecessary, I'd rather not have it in there. And I guess just for me, I'd rather staff not recommend it, would be my thinking, but we'll get to that when we get around to a motion. But that was my question regarding the staff recommendation.
Yeah, along with those comments, excuse me, council member, but this is appropriate time for me to interject. I know there's something that says that we can encumber future councils and mayors to things like this. Does this fall in that category?
That is a real concern of mine, even if it's not that category, David. I don't like to bind future councils.
I think that's a legitimate point.
But I understand you want to make a point on that.
I too have concern about a permanent waiver of anything. The concern, I think, that the applicant had was that our ordinance does say that if you haven't commenced construction within a period of year, that it can revert back, and I don't think that the applicant, given the nature of this particular rezoning, wants to be coming back every year, saying we hadn't chosen to build yet. But there should be some time limit on it. Maybe you extend it beyond that one year, so that they have some degree of certainty, but a permanent waiver, I wouldn't recommend either.
He says it can revert back. It does say it will, does it automatically revert back?
No.
It is not automatic, no. But whether you come up with something that you determine is reasonable, less than permanently, I think would be in order.
And let me say this, this has nothing to do with the relationship with Tanner. The city of Villarica, we have every reason to believe that they're going to do exactly what they say on the timeline that they say they're going to do it. They always have, and I have no reason to believe anything different. The problem I've got with that is that, again, it sets precedent, because if we do it for one, then basically you have to do it for everybody. You know, that is always a concern of mine, that perhaps this applicant wouldn't be the one that was the bad case, but somebody else is going to say, well, you did it for Tanner, why don't you do it for me? Is that a concern, David? Is that legitimate?
Setting precedence is always a concern in any type of zoning matter. That is not an ill-founded concern.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Thank you, Bobby. Would the applicant please come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Gary Thomas, 405 East Johnson Street, Temple, Georgia, here representing Tanner Medical Center Incorporated, 705 Dixie Street, Carrollton, Georgia. Tanner originally filed this application in conjunction with immediately following the application for RA-0818, which is WGA Ventures, that you will hear after hours. Essentially, originally, our application was for the, in previous discussions with the city, when we rezoned other property along Old Stone Road, it was the city's recommendation that if we were doing contiguous parcels, that we go ahead and rezone those at the same time, and that was our intention. That was also, I think, one of the reasons for the initial letter from Stacy Blackman about the waiver, because we didn't have a firm intent for those parcels, but we knew it would be medical-related, and so we wanted that rezoning to be open. Since that time, Mr. Howard has announced to the community that Tanner is in the process of investigating building assisted living and memory care facility. Originally, he talked about building those in three locations in the county, and Villarica was one of those locations, and that location now is possibly going to be RA-0119, and that is the reason for our rezoning request. The other two parcels there, I know you want to talk about them separately, but they are being rezoned because they are contiguous to that 0119, and all would be used for medical office or medical facilities. The reason we wanted to continue with the waiver, and we've talked about it at Tanner, and we're certainly open to a limited waiver, our reason for wanting to do that is, we just made the announcement, we have no drawings, we have no civil, we haven't done any work on this piece of property yet. All of that takes time. We want to meet the requirements of the city. We want to be understanding for the request that the neighbors have made, both about the creek and about the buffers, and all of that takes time, and we don't know if we'll be able to do that in 12 months, and so that's the reason for the waiver. I'll be glad to answer any questions the council has, but that's...
Gary, you heard the discussion a few minutes ago that the 12-month would require, the lapse would require that the city council initiate that.
Yes, sir.
That being the case, do you still feel like you need any type of exception to the 12-month lapse requirement?
I think Tanner would at least want some direction from the city that this council, this mayor and council, wouldn't want to go back and revert that property in 12 months. That is certainly your option. It's kind of open-ended both ways, so...
What number, have you discussed what number might work? You said that they were open to a limit?
Yes, sir. The period of five years was talked about, and we thought that would give us plenty of time, because my problem, Mr. McDougal, is if the memory care will not work there, then I've got to look at another project, and now that goes all the way back to the drawing board again, and so we did discuss five years.
Okay. I think that anytime a rezoning is contemplated by anyone, all of those same factors are in play as they begin to plan and prepare for that. So I think 12 months has probably been vetted out as being reasonable. The council may have some discussion about some other number, but I think five years still might be a little long, because it will cross into new councils. It always concerns me to bind a future council. We have considered issues here that we wish we could have made a different decision on, but zoning had already been changed by another council, or plaits had been approved, or that kind of thing. I'm hoping to avoid that.
Yes, sir. We understand that.
But again, our relationship with Tanner is a good one, and we're all happy with that. This is just a process issue for me.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. We will open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, please do so at this time. As always, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. As always, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Okay, I just, I just would like to have something in writing, just simply because, and I appreciate, I think, that his, he has the best intentions, but if he is no longer in charge, then I don't want to end up with the same situation we have now. Um, I think that before the library was built, it really should have been, a buffer should have been placed then. I mean, but it wasn't. I don't, can't go back, but I would like to have something in writing for my dad. And, you know, when they're doing the, um, going out and building and stuff, then are we going to have an issue of them getting on his property because they did when they were building the library? Again, you know, it's just trying to protect his, his land and, and his property. So if we could have something in writing, I would appreciate it.
Very legitimate concern. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, it will revert back to the council.
I would just, uh, ask maybe, David, if you would just comment just a moment that the ordinances are what we provide to you in writing.
Right.
And that you can, uh, bring a, an action with, with the city council, with the city manager, or with the, um, the city attorney, if you feel like those are not being followed. But David, I wanted you to speak on that.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. I was going to answer also, the writing itself is going to be the action of the council in the minutes, uh, taking whatever action you're going to take and imposing whatever conditions you're going to impose. Those are in writing, and they are binding upon the applicant and all of the rest of the public. So it, the action that you take will be in writing, and will be binding.
I'm reading through the report. Are you done? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No. Um, reading through the staff report, um, four, page four, it would be Section H, whether the authorized uses will not adversely affect the capacity or safety of the street network in the vicinity. And staff is saying that it's not going to be a big difference. I'm concerned if we, if eventually there are a lot of medical offices in there and everything, I do see it changing that road significantly on Old Stone. And I'm, Bobby, I'm still concerned about what we have as far, this is why it would, it's hard for me to think about acting on this tonight. I'm real concerned when you're saying we don't have in place anything to require of builders, to, whether it's a turning lane, traffic coming, or whatever might be required over there because of the impact that that new additional development's going to have. What are we going to go to? Were, were, are we going to absorb it all?
Development regulations only require the developer to improve portion of the street that fronts his property. They're not required to improve all of it. That's where your impact fees would come into play.
So the solution is, for the future, what, our solution is to do what? Put those in place?
They are generally considered very anti-growth.
And the city has considered the implementation of impact fees before. It's a pretty complicated process, and I think the determination was that we were going to have to have two additional staff people just to have impact fees.
Okay, because I knew, we did add the, you know, for the developments that needed to finish out, the stro, streets weren't finished, there was a certain fee that was added on to help pay for that to get done when that, and that's in place right now in the city. Okay, so if that isn't realistic...
That's just to get neighborhoods paved that weren't finished?
Yeah, that, that's a different, that's a different concept.
So what would you consider the solution for the impact that all those additional offices will have on what is a pretty small road back there?
Yeah, if, if, unless we restrict them to Dallas Highway.
That might be hard, too.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what I just mentioned on the, on the big track. Um, that's why they want to dedicate that new, that library entrance road back to the city as a public street, and they're, they're only requesting a curb cut on the end of it to carry all the call center and the big track and all. Gary, if I'm, we'll be going out Dallas Highway.
And then we'll be dealing with GDOT on what we can have there to get that traffic out, right? I mean, between the hospital and those that.
Yes.
It's, that's going to have a major impact on Dallas Highway, then?
Probably.
GDOT, will GDOT?
I don't know if it'll have a major impact, but it'll, you know, it's, it's Georgia DOT's road, so they're going to...
Okay.
If we don't get that roundabout built at Pumpkin Town and 61, we're never going to get any relief.
It's going to have an impact just like the library did.
And let, let me add something here, and I've talked to councilmember McPherson about this, so this is not only directed at Herb, but, you know, as the mayor, it's my responsibility to move these meetings along as fast as we can. We don't have work sessions anymore, so it's somewhat hard for all of us, including me, to try to comprehend in a meeting and then vote on it at the same time, or, or you guys vote. I, I get that completely, and it, to that end, if we need to go back to work sessions, we need to do that. But we're supposed to run these meetings as close to Robert's Rules of Order as we can. So typically, what we would, what I would ask for is a motion and a second, and then we would proceed with discussion, because if it doesn't get a motion, it doesn't get a second, then there's no need for it. Now, I give y'all latitude because we don't have those council meetings. And again, this is not directed at anybody in particular, but just in the interest of moving meetings along, if that's the way I'm still supposed to do those things, then we need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss it for the next two hours if y'all want to.
We don't. But I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request from Tanner Medical Center, Inc., to rezone the property located at 215 Old Stone Road from rural development to office and institutional, with the conditions requested by staff, except that I would strike the permanent waiver on the lapse of zoning.
I've got 217.
Miss 215.
You may have the next one.
Yeah.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
Second. Get your second. Have a motion seconded by councilmember Carter. Discussion. Okay, hearing none. Call a question. All in favor? Two, three, all opposed? Vote just three, one. Item number two.
Mr. Mayor, looking at your map, the, uh, the next piece to be rezoned is RA-02-19. It's the piece immediately to the left of the little, small triangular piece on Old Stone Road. Uh, Tanner Medical Center Incorporated, 705 Dixie Street, Carrollton, Georgia, has made the application. Uh, parcel number VO50110043, uh, location's 217 Old Stone Road, Land Lot 192, 6th District, Carroll County. The, uh, the application is to rezone the property from single-family residential, R20, to office-institutional for future hospital or medical facilities. The particular track is 0.99 plus or minus acres. Current land use is single-family residential, R20, and the future land use calls medical character area. Uh, it appears that the current zoning is correct. It is single-family residential, R20. Future land use does designate that whole area in there as medical character areas. Res zoning of the property to O and I would complement existing institutional medical uses in the vicinity. Proposed zoning is compatible with nearby zoning and uses. There are community facilities, water and sewer and gas that are currently in place to serve the area. It should remain such. Here again, we have, this particular track fronts on Old Stone. I'm not sure how it's going to fit in the future development of Tanner and what they're going to do with their complex. But if it, if it exits onto Old Stone, then at some point, when you add it all together, it's going to have an impact on it. Old Stone is a local residential street with, eh, maybe a little better than local as far as conditions and, and specifications, but it's still inadequate for strictly commercial prop, uh, traffic. Based on city and county's maps, there are no streams or rivers located on the parcel. Staff is recommending approval. Here again, the waiver has been asked for by Tanner, and I won't beat that anymore. Staff recommendations permitted use is limited to medical, dental, and professional offices. All improvements to the, to be installed on the property prior to occupancy, and I'll leave off the permanent waiver request. The Planning Commission voted to approve with staff conditions four to one on their meeting on the 5th. And again, the applicant is present.
Any questions of staff? Or any Planning Commission member that may be here? Okay. Thank you, Bobby. Again, ask the applicant to come forward. Do we know who you are now, Gary?
Uh, for these two parcels, our RA-0219 and RA-0319, they front Old Stone Road. Uh, these parcels are part of that original plan, just to rezone what is contiguous to the current Tanner property. Uh, the only discussions we have had whatsoever about these two parcels is, uh, if you look at the map, to the left of the RA-0319, both of those buildings that have what looks like blue roofs on them, those are our medical office buildings. Both of those buildings are currently full. Uh, in order to recruit additional physicians to the area, you have to have real estate. You have to have the availability to give them a place to work. Uh, what we would see, and possibly for these, is to, uh, build a single-story residential-type building, uh, like you've seen some of our other facilities, like the facility at New Georgia, the facility at West Paulden, to provide space to put a physician in for a temporary amount of time until such time as that physician could move into a larger building or one of our MOBs come open. Uh, that would be the only use that we would have, just due to the size of these two parcels. And that's the same comments for both.
Questions of the applicant?
So what would happen to the building once the, you're saying they're going to stay there until they get?
We'd rotate them out. We would rotate them out, Ms. March. We're continually trying to bring in new physicians and just being able to have that space. You know, one of the first questions a physician asks when you start recruiting them, okay, where's my office going to be? Where can I see patients? Because if they can't see patients, they can't do their work, and, and that would give us, at least, temporary. And then we might go back and make that administrative offices if we needed to at a later time, which would still fit that same rezoning. But that's been the only discussion, and we don't have a firm plan for that right now. It was mainly just because it was contiguous to the other parcel.
But right now, that's basically what the building's going to be used for.
Yes, ma'am. If, if, if we, if we move forward with that building, and right now, we don't, we don't, that's long-term, but this was the opportunity to get the rezoning.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This will open up the public comments portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to give comments for or against this proposal, please do so at this time. Seeing none, it will revert back to the council.
I'm going to make a, a motion to approve the rezoning request from Tanner Medical Center, Inc., to rezone the property located at 217 Old Stone Road from single-family residential, R20, to office and institutional, with the conditions requested by staff, except that I would strike the permanent waiver on the lapse of zoning.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Discussion. Yeah, Mayor, I, I may need to even revert back to my previous vote, and what I'm struggling with is this. I don't have a problem with the rezoning, per se. What I find challenging is that this is the first time we've gotten together to discuss a pretty complicated issue on these three, and how it's all going to work out and traffic flow and everything else. So it's more about the timing and digesting it and getting the feedback from everybody and trying to figure out the best way to move forward. That's my challenge. Not that I'm against the zoning, you know, the zoning change. I just want it to work. I want it to work for the people that live around there. I want it to work for the roads.
And thi, this may, may help you, and Tom and I have sort of got this little agreement, and this is just a suggestion, of course, but I've been trying to attend as many of the P and Z meetings as I can, and the DDA meetings. That becomes a problem, and Tom and I kind of share that. He goes to one, I go to the other. So it may be help, you may find it helpful to go to the P and Z meetings so that you get, you know, get that education prior to the council meeting.
And I am reading all their notes. You know, I read the notes, record, I make calls. Bobby and I talk. We get additional pictures. I come in, try to get some information, concerned about what's going on over there with the neighbors and everything else, and how this is going to impact the area. But this is the first time in these minutes that we're supposed to vote. It's the first time we've discussed it together.
That's a very good point. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number three.
Mr. Mayor, the next one is practically identical to the previous, RA-03-19. Again, Tanner Medical Center Incorporated, Carrollton, Georgia. Has made application to rezone this property at 229 Old Stone Road from single-family residential, R20, to office-institutional for hospital and medical facilities. Parcel number VO50110031. The track is 0.92 plus or minus acres. Single-family residential, future land use, medical character area. Staff comments are exactly the same, Mr. Mayor, as the previous case. Staff would like to make a recommendation to, to, uh, to approve with, uh, conditions. Number one, permitted use is limited to medical, dental, and professional offices, and to all improvements to be installed on the property prior to occupancy. Planning Commission voted four to one to approve with conditions on March 5th.
Questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Bobby. Gary, you're on again.
Uh, same comments, that this parcel would be with that earlier parcel, the one you just approved. It would take both of them to build the building that I was talking about just a minute ago, and so not to delay or carry this out any further. Same comments.
The only reason I got you up here is because I, I've got to ask you a question.
All right, sir.
It's very near and dear to my heart, and that is, uh, and I'm not asking for a, for a commitment in, in writing, but this is part, you know where I'm going with this. This is part of our gold nugget trail.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we hope we can partner with, with Tanner, and, and this would be our golden mile. Is that what it's called? The first mile?
Model mile.
Model mile. So I just want to interject that at this point.
And, and I, I think those discussions have gone to Mr. Howard, and he has certainly supported for that, uh, as he's indicated support for the green belt in Carrollton and us having a walking trail on the present facility. So yes, I, I, I think Tanner's very open to those discussions.
Thank you, sir. Public comments portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to give, uh, comments for or against, please do so. Seeing none, it will revert back to the council.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request from Tanner Medical Center, Inc., to rezone the property located at 229 Old Stone Road from single-family residential, R20, to office and institutional, O and I, with the conditions requested by staff, except that I would strike the permanent waiver.
Second.
Have a motion and multiple seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number four.
Mr. Mayor, we're continuing on. RA-08-18 is a rezoning request by WGA Ventures LLC, 4751 Best Road, Suite 2300, Atlanta, Georgia, 30337, to rezone a tract of property at 821 Dallas Highway, Land Lot 193, of the 6th District in Carroll County. If you're looking at your map, it'll be the upper-left small piece, uh, that fronts Dallas Highway. The, uh, request is to rezone the property, um, from general commercial, which is current, to office-institutional for professional office. This small track, and, and I won't speak for the applicant, but I'll, I'll, I'll add this, is to be added to the O and I piece that's immediately south of that. It's where the call center's going to be built. It's just going to be part of that track. Anyway. We've gone through the staff report. Uh, subject property is currently zone GC, general commercial. The future land use map designates this, again, as medical character area. There are no streams and creeks on this track. In fact, there's nothing on it right now, I don't think. The, uh, we have adequate water sewer services to support it, both now and in the future. Even though GC, the current zoning, is absolutely compatible with the area, they want to make it consistent with the larger track, O and I, which is also compatible. We've designated that development of this is not going to significantly impact the capacity of Dallas Highway, and it, it won't the capacity, but it's, moving traffic is going to be the issue. Moving traffic is gonna be the issue that we've all... That we've got now, and we're gonna have with the roundabout and all that. So... The... Staff recommendation is to approve with the following conditions. Permitted uses limited to business, medical, dental, and professional offices. All improvements to be installed on property prior to occupancy. And the ingress and egress shall be permitted only from Dallas Highway, and there was no waiver asked for on this application. Planning and zoning commission approved with condition five to zero. The applicant is present.
Any questions with staff? Thank you, sir. Gary, just stand up where you are, buddy.
Wrong one.
Oh, that's right. This is...
This is WGA.
I was gonna save him a few steps, anyway.
Just one second.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Sam Price. Office is 120 Dixie Street in Carrollton, Georgia. I represent WGA Ventures tonight. As you can see, the only thing that we're talking about is a one-half acre, which is contiguous to the larger tract west of the RA-119, north of the RA-319. We are under contract at the present time with Tanner Medical Center for the purchase of that particular property. We're in the due diligence period. We have performed the environmental studies on the property at the present time, and everything is looking good for the possible movement of our southeastern headquarters for the call center to that particular location. I believe that the president of the company made an announcement two or three weeks ago that was in the paper about the possibility of movement, and this is where we're talking about looking. The only reason we're looking at making this zoning change tonight is because all the rest of it is O and I. It's surrounded by O and I, and we just want it all to be compatible at the same time so that we don't have an issue with commercial. Now, as to the conditions that Bobby set out, he said permitted use is limited to business, medical, dental, and professional offices. Professional offices and businesses, certainly, but we would not be able to do medical or dental. That would be a restriction that we have in our contract at the present time with Tanner. They don't want us to be in competition with them, but they do want us to be close. We will be a call center. It's a regional and moving rapidly to a national call center. They have contracts with cities as far north as Washington, D.C. and Houston, Texas. So we're hoping to move back to Villarica and make this our corporate headquarters. So we're asking for your consideration.
Any questions with the applicant? I have one very important question, but anybody else have one? You may have the same one.
Let's hear your very important question.
My very important question is, when are we gonna make an official announcement on this?
Well, once we get this zoning transferred over tonight, what I am hearing is that they're rapidly expecting to try to close on this property. Once they close on it, they're not anticipating sitting on it. They've got the... They're talking to their lending sources and all at the present time and actively trying to get some designs set up.
I would just encourage... I would ask respectfully that the sooner you can get those numbers, because this is a big deal for the city of Villarica and a big deal for southeast. And Mr. Adams is a Carroll Countyan by birth, and we are welcoming him home with open arms. But I have kept some reporters at bay now for some time, and we would love for there to be an official statement.
I am not supposed to be making any type of announcements.
I don't want you to right now. Just as soon as you can.
But as you know, Mayor, we did at one time discuss other options in the other areas, and there were requests at that point in time for certain tax breaks and movement of city offices and up. And what we're talking about doing right now is gonna be solely on the dime of Southeast Trans and WGA Ventures. We're not asking for any type of tax considerations.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Any other questions with the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, we will open this up for public comments. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please do so at this time.
John Hattamack, 3106 Golfer Way. This is the property that caused me the most concern at planning and zoning. Because of the way it's presented, we're talking about, you know, a half an acre up here off of Dallas Highway, and yet, as the discussion unfolded, no, we're not... We're talking about that, yeah, as rezoning, but the whole issue is the 10 acres. And it just causes all kinds of confusion, and it's that way in your package as well. You know, that's why I said originally, you always need to consider all of these things simultaneously, not individually. But this is the property that caused me the most. And in fact, at planning and zoning, was the first time I had heard that this is the property that's going to be this mysterious new employer coming into town. I thought this was all medical property. Here, we're talking about a call center. Just very, very confusing. Part of it is the timing. The other part is the traffic flow. I don't care what you say, Old Stone Road is going to be impacted. Now, tonight's the first I've heard about the access from the library into that property adjacent to that. That was not discussed at planning and zoning. They had not heard about it. Transportation is an issue for all of this. It is going to impact Dallas Highway. It is going to impact Old Stone Road. Old Stone Road is already heavily traveled, and it is not of that capacity. You know, you've got to approve this. I mean, we're talking the 500-pound gorilla in, you know, in these discussions. Tanner is going to do this, and I laud that. But again, wouldn't it be nice if we knew all of the things that were being discussed? There's other properties here, too. Is that going to ultimately be encompassed? Probably. But, you know, this is the property that caused me, and I think other members of planning and zoning, confusion when we discussed it because of the way it's presented. Thank you for your discussion on the extended warranty. That needed to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll revert back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning request of WGA Ventures LLC to rezone the property located at 821 Dallas Highway from general commercial to office institutional with conditions requested by staff, but we strike on condition one, medical and dental.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous. Next item. And David, I want to ask you a question and make a statement for the record. I believe the next two... I know the first one has to do with my former employee, lawyer, RP Paving Solutions. I am no longer an employee and haven't been an employee of RP Paving Solutions for some time. I have done consulting work for them until about two or three weeks ago. I was not aware that RP Paving had even bid this project. It was not a part of the project bid, and the first I heard of it was in Tom's office when he told me. So, David, if you feel like I need to recuse myself, even though I don't vote, I could vote if it were tied. So whatever you... I just wanted to state that for the record.
And I appreciate you doing that. Based on the facts that you listed right there, I don't think you're required to abstain. As you said, you can't vote unless there's a tie, anyway. But based on those facts, you wouldn't have had to abstain, anyway.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed, Bobby.
Mr. Mayor, several weeks ago, our Water and Sewer Department worked for several weeks to repair a major sewer problem on South Dogwood. And this item is to put the street back. We received three bids. Magnum Paving of Villarica for $17,300. RP Paving from Villarica for $11,682. And JW Paving from Carrollton for $15,705. We'd like to recommend the low bidder, RP Paving for $11,682. It will be funded from the Water and Sewer operating budget. We need to get this repaired.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to accept a low bid from RP Paving to repair South Dogwood for the submitted price of $11,682.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? All... Is that unanimous? Okay. You know, hold your hand up long enough for me to lift, see them. Okay. Item number six?
Mr. Mayor, we've taken a look at Pumpkin Town Road from Shoreline Parkway up to the Highway 61, Dallas Highway. When it's raining and at night, the striping has faded to a point where it's... It was... It's obvious that folks can't keep their vehicles on the pavement, but it's really hard. If it's raining, you can't see to keep it in the lane. So what we did is we decided to see if we could get some price quotes on putting... Updating the thermoplastic striping and reinstalling some raised pavement markers on the center line. We managed to get two price quotes, one from RP Paving for $27,460, and one from Highway Services, Inc. for the amount of $16,698.99. We have enough money in our street department operating budget, maintenance budget, to cover this. I think we need to do this. It's seriously needed, based on the conditions.
Counsel?
Bobby, it's your budget. I trust that this is the prior... This is how you choose to prioritize it. So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the low bid from Highway Services, Inc. for the low bid amount of $16,698.99. Funding for the work will come from the street department operating budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one real quick clarification. The bid that's attached to the package is for RP Paving. I think it's supposed to be for raised pavement markers. See what I'm talking about? When you open up the actual bid? Is that right?
Well, there's multiple bids in there.
Is that what I got?
Yeah, there's two bids. RP Paving is the first bid.
Okay, so the one at the top. Got it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Tab C, Public Works, Pete?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next two items will be presented by Dean Ziegler, who's our wastewater manager, and the third item will be presented by Charlie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First item, I'm here to discuss the Aqua Disc filter for the north plant that was budgeted and approved for. The current situation is, we have one of these in service there now. Does a good job of operating. The downside of that is it's six, seven years old now. It needs repair, and there's... It needs cleaning, and there's no way to take it out of service, just the way it was installed from the get-go. We're asking for a second one to provide us with that redundancy and allow us to perform maintenance to... And cleaning to the one that's in service. And then when we have two in place, we'll be able to rotate them out and prolong the life of both the units.
How long would it take you to swap them? I mean, you got to take the old one out, to clean it, and put the new one in. So I love it.
It'll be two units side by side, and it's just gonna be turning the valves, put the flow to one, drain the one, clean it, do whatever.
Was this a budgeted item? Did y'all ask for this in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Does it... Is it on budget, on budget?
From Douglas County Spalston. The money people, that's where they broke it out from.
Any questions?
No. I'll make the motion to authorize the purchase of an Aqua Aerobic disc filter for $220,760 to be installed. Control plant from Aqua Aerobic, the sole source provider.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Have a motion and multiple seconds. Any discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two?
All right. The next item, again, was an approved budgeted item. Kind of the same deal. We're trying to cut the wick on some of the bombs there. We've got five of these ATAD pumps in our...
That's scary.
It's an Ohio thing.
No. Kind of the background on this, you know, this is... These particular units are at the west plant, and with our Class A sludge digestion system, there's five pumps down there of three different sizes. We have backups for one. This proposal is asking for two... This is the wet ends where we can replace them, because... And this is, again, it's something that can't be down for any length of time. So the process and the plan is to have those new ones put in. The old one will come out, rebuild bearings, and have it ready to go in place. And this will be three of the big size, and then two each of the smaller size. So, again, just us trying to get ahead of some things and some kind of poor design from the get-go and operate things as best we can.
So this was a budgeted item. Y'all asked for it last year in the budget.
Yes, sir.
During the process. Is it under budget or on budget?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Anytime motion?
I was gonna let somebody else spend the money. I make the motion.
I make the motion to authorize purchase of the rotating assembly required to run the ATAD system at the west WPCP pump at $51,420 for the sole purpose of solest provider thermal process systems.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Item number three?
Mr. Mayor, before you get to that, I just... Mr. McPherson just told me that you might want to announce that the entire downtown area is blocked off with the train.
It's what?
Blocked off with the train. So that if you need to get out, you need to find an alternate route to get out.
You mean one that stopped out there and got all the crosses blocked, huh?
Well, we've got a little ways to go before we need to get out. For the public benefit, that's great.
Probably need to... Does staff have a contact for Mr. Poe? Anybody in the crowd can be...
How long has it been stopped?
Mr. McPherson. Mayor McPherson.
Seen you in a while. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't need any money tonight, so...
Don't get him started.
We, like, we appreciate getting our new mowing equipment. That's starting to be used daily. I hope you're seeing the benefits of that. But it's 23 of our old used mowers, some of them quite old, declared salvage, so we can get them listed on GovDeals and get some money back in the general fund on that.
All right. I make a motion to declare the used mowing equipment as salvaged and listed for auction on GovDeals.com for sale to the highest bidder.
Second.
Motion in many seconds. All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tab D, City Manager.
All right. I have two items for you tonight. The first is a letter of support to GDOT for the proposed roundabout at Highway 78 and Connors Road. This project has evidently been contemplated and programmed by GDOT for some time, although I did not know about it until recently. I received a phone call from a firm, which was the first notice that I had. And then I had a meeting with the pre-construction manager for GDOT and the engineer for the private firm that's doing the design. And what I have been told is this project has been programmed as a safety project, even though I had chief Mansour look, and there have not been a large number of incidents at that intersection. What has generated GDOT's interest in the intersection is the potential of tractor-trailers entering 78 just east of this intersection, turning right onto 78 to go up to the bypass and effectively be sitting almost... to the bypass, and effectively be sitting almost still in the right lane on seventy-eight as they're getting started, and having somebody zip over the hill at, by the storage places, and run the risk of not, you know, paying attention and running into the rear of the tractor-trailer. So they're looking at it as a safety item. It is going to require them to build, I think, a fairly wide roundabout, because they're gonna have to have a stacking lane westbound in order for a train that is blocking the intersection to not queue cars back up into the roundabout. So if you're going westbound on seventy-eight and there's a train, and you wanted to turn right on Connors, if there was no second lane there, you would just back up into the roundabout, and you would just effectively send about from working. So it's gonna take a fairly wide piece of ground, and more than just a single lane operation there. They are also planning, as I understand it, or at least considering giving East-West Express a temporary permit for a curb cut on seventy-eight prior to this being built. So they, they understand the issues, but feel like this is the best long-term solution. What we're being asked to do is to give them a letter of support, because that's mandatory in their process for them to continue with the project.
If you don't have no say...
Yeah, if we don't approve the letter, then, then we find out if this really is.
Let me ask the obvious question. Have we even approved anything for East-West Express? Has this council approved?
No. I don't believe it, it was already zoned, right, Bobby?
Well, that's my question. What is the current zoning?
It's currently zoned appropriate for his business.
Okay.
So they wouldn't have to come before the...
He has got, he has submitted a concept plan to GDOT for that entrance, and they haven't approved it yet, but, but he has been working on it.
I'm all for safety, obviously, all of us are up here, but boy, I tell you what, it's a little bit that we've got two other intersections that, that we've been trying to get roundabouts in for now.
They're waiting on us on those, though.
Well, not us necessarily, but on property acquisition.
On construction easements.
Right, but not city.
No.
Yeah. They're not waiting, you said waiting on us, right?
Well, to get that done, and we, we haven't been able to get it done because of the property owners.
I guess, you know, that's, you know, that's, if, if there's probably, half the crowd I hear is thinking that right now, why are we talking about doing a roundabout right here, and we still haven't worked on the two that we've talked about doing for as long as I can remember, so...
Bobby, the traffic east-west, would it head down and turn right off seventy-eight? Are we contemplating putting a red light in at that intersection on the private bridge?
Red light, which would take them, what, up over the loop-de-loop?
Yeah, but the, the roundabout will be built adequate in size for a tractor-trailer to, to go down and go back out, back to west, back to town.
Okay, what about, are they gonna head up to Connor Road, up to that red light? Are they gonna, obviously headed for I-20?
I'm sure the, yeah, the roundabout will, will, will take them both, all directions.
They'll be able to do that.
Yeah.
But they'll have the choice. They could go right up the ramp.
But if they went...
They will go Connor Road.
Yeah, 'cause if they go that way, there's a red light.
Yes, 'cause you can't get out up there.
There's no speculation about putting a red light in at the intersection, where that loop?
Not that we've heard.
We've talked to them, but they haven't said anything.
Okay.
We can't put a red light in at the top of the ramp. It's too close to twenty.
Chief would know better about the number of accidents there, but it is a very awkward intersection. If you're getting in the turn lane coming from either direction, you really hit one another if you get where you need to be. You just have to be really careful there, who's coming this way, 'cause you have to get in the same space to make your turn on top of one another. And then you've got the other, what is that, Montgomery coming up over the hill? It's, it's really awkward. I drive it all the time and see. Apparently, it's not real accident prone. Do we have any way to discourage trucks from going left in the middle of downtown? I mean, if this place opens up, it, it came up a couple of years ago under previous city manager when there was talk of this business being there, and then we never heard anything else about it.
Yeah, right now, Highway sixty-one is a GDOT road in front of us here.
Yeah.
I believe it's a legitimate concern to consider, and I suspect that that's what's happening with GDOT, that if you start having those tractor-trailers entering them onto Highway seventy-eight there, you're gonna have people coming over that, the hill from downtown. Very good possibility there's gonna be that increase in accidents when, when something's not done here. I've noticed that the staff recommendation is approval.
Yeah, if you have a tractor-trailer pull out of the proposed east-west space and turns left, then there's this broadside across the road.
For both lanes of traffic.
And if you zip over the hill and you're looking at your phone and...
And we know in a perfect world, nobody's doing that.
That's also a bad combination.
You're putting me in the...
And if you have the roundabout in between you, and you do that, then you're just gonna run into the roundabout.
It certainly, everybody in the room, that that is not our most urgent need, but it does appear to be the one that GDOT is looking at. And there are other reasons why these other ones aren't moving forward. They have to do with right-of-way and other things. It's not on this council.
Right.
I don't think it's, it's such a safety issue now, and I don't think that necessarily will be in the foreseeable future unless that truck, that east-west comes in there.
Express.
Express. So that concerns me. I think I'd, I'd be concerned if we didn't at least offer our support to this, because it could delay some down the road. He, he puts his business in, and then we can't get this done. We're way behind the eight ball, which we've been plenty of times here. That would be my concern, if we don't offer this support. And, and I'll say, too, I haven't, I've heard about this just intermittently, and just very few details over the years, but this, this came as a surprise, too. I didn't know that this was coming up, so...
Motion?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll move that we approve the letter of support to GDOT for the proposed roundabout at Highway seventy-eight and Connors Road.
Second.
Have a motion to second, any further discussion? Not, all in favor? Unanimous? Item number two.
All right, the second item is a proposal to engage Falcon Design to help us with a site plan development for the Welcome Center Butterballs duplex area. Staff are operating under a directive from council to work toward a, at a minimum, an exterior renovation of the building because of the condition of the building. I've met, I hadn't kept up with it, but numerous times now with the architect, with staff, and with a potential coffee shop operator, trying to determine if, what the best way is to use this building, and how that impacts the site and the exterior. We've had the architect who prepared plans that resulted in the original bid, split those plans out into interior and exterior, and what has resulted is a concept that we think has at least potential to work, and it would involve either parking behind the duplex or the demolition of the duplex and parking on that entire site with pedestrian access that took you down from the duplex grade down to the, of the gas station. At a minimum, we need to do one of those two things to have some parking there, and then also, we would like to look at doing a road dot on West Montgomery that would enable us to have parallel parking there, if we can get permits from GDOT, because you would be right up against a right-turn lane on the seventy-eight and sixty-one. So we don't know what's practical, what's, as far as the permitting goes, but there's lots of issues with the retaining wall, with the utilities, with the topo. It's just a very, very difficult site. But we, we've worked on it enough as a group to believe that, that we may actually have a concept that could become something that would be a whole lot better than just renovating an old gas station and having a building, but actually create something that we could not just enjoy, but something we could be excited about. And so we're, we're pursuing that, but we need some money and somebody that's, you know, on the engineering side, the civil side, to tell us, you know, can it be done? What's it gonna cost? So that's the proposal. It's, it's a bunch of money, it's gonna be a bunch more time, but it will give you guys an opportunity to see a concept of a finished site. And then if we come back in here and we say, okay, it's two-hundred thousand, or three-hundred thousand, or four-hundred thousand, or five-hundred thousand, to actually do all of this, the site, the building, the duplex, you can, you'll have something that you can sort of wrap your head around and say, yeah, that's worth it, or no, it's not.
So what we have standing over there right now is a building that, that we've spent taxpayer money on to put a new roof on. Building is an eyesore in downtown. We've long needed to do something with that. I'm of the belief that, that this is a, a sound option, to have them take a look at it, tell us what our options are. It may be that we don't move forward with it, but, but I think that we need to move forward with doing something with that building, and this makes good sense to me, to understand what we're dealing with. I know that this Welcome Center was also part of the Ron Huffman plan that we all saw, that we all liked. So I'm gonna be in favor of taking this next step and, and allowing staff to engage Falcon Design to come up with a plan for us to take a look at, and if we do something different when we see those dollars, then we will, but at least we'll know what we're talking about.
One thing that I have developed a conviction about after having worked with this list of projects that we've talked about for a year and a half, is we don't have the money to make a mistake, 'cause there is no money in the future to do any of these things twice. And if the smart play on this is to knock it all down...
We wanna know that.
Doing it today or after this is a lot smarter than spending X hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then because of parking limitations or whatever, it not being functional, and then knocking it down?
Agreed.
'Cause at that point, none of us may be working here.
Maybe we should.
I agree with both of those.
So I'm, I'm, I think this is money that we may not benefit from directly, but is the safe play. And right now, we just can't afford to do something that doesn't work.
Well, that was a, it was a focal point of the Renaissance Plan. We wanna make sure that it actually fits it. It's an eyesore, it's blight, and we own it, which makes us a little hypocritical when we're trying to drive the city when we own part of it. We need to, we need to find out what we can do.
All right, so I'll move that we authorize the city manager to engage Falcon Design consultants to design site improvements surrounding Butterballs and the duplex for an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Have a motion, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Tom. Tab E, Economic Development, Janet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, when we decide bands as a board, we do it based upon the budget, and so for nineteen, we were budgeted ninety thousand dollars, which was approved. That's how I begin the process of booking bands. My legwork for begins as soon as the budget is approved in September. So I've been working on getting these bands via negotiation since October. So that's where the process comes from, just so you know that. So my next item is two thousand and nineteen headlining band, Gold Nugget Drop, Band of Gold. This is a budgeted item from the general fund for two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. The board agreed for this band. We talked about bands in January, or we start the process of talking about bands in December. This band is very popular through the metro Atlanta area. They played at Milltown. In fact, they are opening up for The Temptations at Milltown, which is a pretty big deal. So staff is recommending playing Gold, headlining two thousand and nineteen, Gold Nugget, Apple Amphitheater, in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the contract agreement necessarily engaged Band of Gold as a headlining band for the two thousand and nineteen Gold Nugget Drop from Tuesday, December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Go here a second.
Second.
Have a motion to second. As far as discussion is concerned, I said that I would withhold my comments or rebuttal to Councilmember McPherson's remarks earlier, and, and I wanna preface this by saying that this is, Councilwoman McPherson and I have a fantastic relationship as far as disagree on this, and there was a purpose, you, you sort of stole my thunder just a little bit. I think you probably, you know, we, we had a, the department had come up a few minutes ago, and we asked them, I asked them on three separate issues, if it was a budgeted item, and did they present the budget to the council last fall? It was yes to all three of those. So I'm gonna ask you the same question. Was this a budgeted item?
Yes, sir.
Are you under budget on this, on budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The reason I put you through that, and the reason I said that earlier, is because, and I said this at the last meeting, when we're going through the budget process, whether it's elected officials or staff's fault, we need that information at that time, so that we can look at it. So I'm not, I'm not even pointing fingers at anybody in, in general, but I'm just saying, if we just approved without much discussion, almost, what were all your items together, Pete? Four hundred and fifty worth of items?
Almost three hundred.
I, I realize that there's a difference in, in bands and, and things in our sewer plant, but the, the point is, that we go through this budget process in the fall, and it takes a considerable amount of time for staff to put all that together. I did it for fourteen years. It takes a considerable time to happen, and if we don't ask, if I, let me just put, if I don't ask the questions at that time of staff, should I expect anything different when it comes up for a vote in, in the, in the summertime? So that's the rebuttal, sort of, of what, what you had said earlier. Am I, I, everybody on this council understands that we've asked our citizens to, to pay more for their water, for their sewer, for their garbage rates. We understand that. We understand that money's tight. We understand, as, as our city manager just said eloquently, that, that we don't have the money to make a mistake. That scares me. That scares me. But with that said, you need to make sure that if we're approving these things in the fall for the next year's budget, that when it comes time for the staff to come, they do all, once, once they get that budget approved in concept, they start that process of putting these bands together. That's the time to say, we don't want headbands. We don't wanna spend ten thousand dollars for a band. That's just my point. That's my opinion, since we have a motion to second. Further discussion?
Well, I, I do wanna make a couple of comments. I wanna associate myself with those comments that you made, because I don't, I don't feel like we have a need to keep repeating things. But I, when we go through the budget process, we do set out budgets, and if you come to us within budget, I think we owe due consideration of that when they come in. That being said, Councilwoman McPherson and I did, I know you don't say Ferson, but Ferson, did discuss getting some numbers from staff, so that we could have a better understanding of the impact. Now, she made a comment earlier today that she could write a check for less than that, but I, I don't know if you can, because I don't know that we really know what the indirect benefit was to all of these businesses. So that would be the only point I would make, is that we do want to, to support staff, and we do wanna support these boards... and we do want to support these boards, because they work hard. And if you come in under budget, I think that we do understand that you begin working on these negotiations with these contracts months in advance. And it is kind of unfortunate to, at the very last minute, or when you're right down to the wire, to suddenly feel like you might not be able to get it done. But I don't think it, and I know you would agree with intentional. It's just that when the public comes to any of us with questions, we have a responsibility to answer those. And sometimes, and I won't speak for anybody else, but sometimes a member of the public will come to me, and I will do my level best to explain to them how I see that. And generally, we will. So, I appreciate the work you do, and I know everybody does. I don't mean to separate anybody out from that. But I wanted to make those comments, because I wasn't here at the last meeting. And this allows me to talk about that just for a moment.
You know, it's working with the Dorset Festival. As working with the Dorset Festival, you know, I understand what they are going through. You get what you pay for. And a good band, something that you're gonna be pleased with, it's gonna cost you. And I'm not saying, you know, if you want something cheap, you go, that's what you're gonna get, something cheap. And a good band, you're not gonna get them for nothing cheap. I know that. It sounds ridiculous, some of the prices that they give us, but if you want something good, you're gonna, and a lot of times, if you, if a band is going, like, say, to an affair in Atlanta, and they're going through the day before something, and you might get with them, you might get a better deal than you would if they're just coming from somewhere just straight to Villarica. But, you know, like, you get what you pay for.
Well, and let me just say one more thing, too, and I don't mean to belabor this, but we're investing in ourselves with some of this. I mean, our rec department, it doesn't make any money, but we're investing in ourselves. We built this amphitheater over here as an investment in our downtown area. So, if we're not gonna invest in ourselves, we don't need anybody else to come in here and invest in ourselves. So, I think that is a, that's a fundamental way to look at how we operate that. That is about investing in the community and providing a quality of life. That's how I look at it. But everybody comes to this thing on their own. I mean, they all stand for election, and they answer to those who they answer to.
And like you said, if we voted on it in the budget, why are we gonna beat it up down the road? I mean, we've done it, we just might as well get something better for next year, or do something different. But if you've already voted on it, and I think it went 5-0, then why are we gonna sit here half the, and argue about something, although we might say we made a mistake, but it's done now, so let's get it done and move on. And if it's not what we want, then for the next budget year, we do something different, or we get it done then. But don't beat up on the people now that's something that we voted on. That's the way I see it.
I do want to make the comment, I did speak to Carrollton, who was competition to us. Tori and I have a great relationship. He books the bands for Carrollton. We have a non-compete for our summer concert series, so that we're not competing against each other. They do six regional acts versus our two. Their minimum bid to a band is 10,000. They just recently offered a band $25,000 to play at their amp. So, we're certainly in the range. Douglasville will be getting an amp in the near future. So, we have to keep those things in mind while we're booking our talent, because we certainly want them to come, not Douglasville, not Carrollton, but here.
We have a motion, a second, on the floor. I do want to say, one of the 32 wins that our girls sat was against Carrollton, though.
I know that's important to you, sir.
I got an observation. When we're, when we're talking about where this fits into the whole operation of this place, and digging out of this hole that we're in, I have a perspective of this from, coming from the outside, and, and the question that I have asked myself for 18 months is, what causes or allows a half a dozen downtown restaurants in a town of only 15,000 people to be successful at once? Because in my experience, that's not normal. So, there's, there's something regional about the appeal of our downtown, I think. This is, this is my guest, guesstimation of what is behind what I've observed, that I think the concert entertainment program fosters. And it's not that we had Mother's Finest and Atlanta Rhythm Section, because what I observed was true when I got here 18 months ago. So, y'all been doing something, and I don't even think we understand what it was we did, or what it is we're doing, but I think this seems to be building momentum in the direction of us being a regional dining draw, and regional shopping. But I can't tell that the shops are successful, because I'm not involved enough. I just see the restaurants and talk to the restaurant owners. I talked to one owner yesterday at lunch, who told me that his business has been growing 20% a year, every year. And Councilman McDougal is a primary contributor to that success, and he appreciates that. So, our, our folks here are doing better than, than I think 15,000 people explain, and I think this fits into that. The other comment that I would make, is we've talked about what is on the plate for us to fix, is we're only gonna fix this place by growing out of our problems.
Amen.
And if we sit still, we are going to get run over by the eventual cost of maintaining and fix, has not been maintained and fixed with an inadequate customer base.
Very good.
I like that, Matt.
So, I mean, we have got to grow out of this.
David, I want to ask you a question. Being the attorney here, there's actually a couple attorneys in the room. But I've always heard that you should never ask a witness a question unless you really know what the answer's gonna be. Is that a pretty fair statement?
That is the theory on...
All right. Well, when I looked around the room just now, I know I see four or five businesses in here represented right now, which is a big number, considering the number of people we got in this room. So, I'm gonna ask a question, not even knowing what the answer is. How had your business opened before the mill opened? How many business owners are there in here? Let me ask that question first. One, two, three, four, five, six. Five or six. How many of you had a business before the mill opened?
In Villarica.
Enough. We have a motion, a second, on the floor. Any further discussion?
Just as a rebuttal to the rebuttal, I will say that you made a, an important point there, that you said that this has been going on since you got here. And I would say...
Before I got here.
Before you got here, that there is quality entertainment. I would not call it cheap. There is quality entertainment that can be gotten, and we were reaping the benefits. So, I'm just saying, it needs to be looked at.
I would talk about supply and demand.
Can I make a real quick point, because I think this is pretty impressive?
I think we're about... You can go ahead. Move on. This is where Judge Udy would say, you're winning.
I know. But...
Does it look like you're losing?
This is pretty cool, though. This is pretty cool. So, when we had Atlanta Rhythm Section, we sold out the VIP seating in one week. When we had Mother's Finest, we sold out VIP seating in three days. That's pretty impressive.
All right. You're still winning.
Motion, a second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, unanimous. Parks and Recreation, I. Vicky Coleman, that's what it says on the, I. Vicky Coleman.
I see it.
Good evening, everyone. The item that's before you is a request to film at the V-Plex. This request is, has been submitted by Universal Content Productions, LLC. You have a copy of their application that, or excuse me, their contract that's attached. They're seeking to use the V-Plex March 18th, 19th, and 20th. So, this is kind of a fairly short turnaround, if you will. The purpose of using it to film, they're working on a pilot episode for a television show. And so, there are some, a few requests that they have in there that staff is gonna be able to address without any issues. So, staff recommendation is essentially approval of the contract. Let me pull, the total cost, $5,580 is what the applicant would be paying to the city. And particularly, the staff time, we've looked to be consistent with some of the things that we just talked about in the last, so, some of the labor and material costs that they've asked for, that's been taken into consideration. We're putting that number together as well. So...
Are you saying that the $5,000 covers the cost to the city?
It absolutely covers the cost, as well as their use...
And their surplus?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's easy.
David, have you looked at the contract?
Yes, I've looked at it, and they made all the changes that I requested that they make to it. So, I'm fine with it.
Looking at your information, yeah, I'm gonna ask him to come up, but looking at your information, this is a pilot for SyFy channel, so this is not, you know, this is just a big...
I didn't want to...
No, I'm sorry.
I wanted to let...
Please come on up. Forget anything I said.
You want to say anything?
I, I'm here to ask, answer questions, if y'all have any. I mean, my name's Seth Zimmerman, I'm the location manager on the show, so...
Are you gonna have extras out there?
We will. Our extras, our extras casting is central casting, so...
Okay. Is that who does it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, hey, I've been an extra.
I don't know their contact information. I would Google it.
I'm gonna ask the question that Janet probably is thinking about, about what attracted you to Villarica? How'd you find out about us?
Well, the film production world is a, we, and we're actually using another piece of property that's just outside of city limits in Carroll County. And because we travel with so much chicanery, that's one of the words that I like to use for what we do, we try to find stuff close together. So, we had scenes at a, at a football field, and, you know, right over there, and it worked out. They like the look of it, and we're kind of cheating it to be part of a school that's split apart, split, split apart, like, three different locations. So, movie magic.
Well, there's been a number of movies filmed here. We've been fortunate. I would, oh, I'm ready, but he's, he may still have some more time. Ready to move on.
Are you an extra? You do?
Yeah, he is.
If they ask me to, I'll do it. I'm just kidding. All right. I'll make a motion to approve and request to film by Universal Content Production, LLC, as reviewed by the city attorney.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, sir. Welcome to Villarica.
Thank you very much.
And now, our amended budget, I mean, Zen item, tab G.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Cheryl Bell made some comments at the beginning of the meeting. She has requested a new street light to be placed in Charleston Place in a dark area. Since that request, we've had Georgia Power survey it and give us a price quote on getting a light put in. Through that process, we've discovered there are two other areas that have requested, citizens that have requested lights as well, in some dark areas. And normally, to install a new light, when there's not a pole charge or an upfront charge, it's whatever the light costs on a flat rate per month. All three of these light requests, Georgia Power has quoted us prices for upfront charges from a low of $1,300 to $2,000. And that's, you know, that's significant impact on our budget. What we'd like to recommend is, you know, let's let the power company dictate if the light is actually needed, based on their lighting plan that they, they use to install lights to begin with. Because if we're not careful, we're gonna be putting lights everywhere where they're really not needed, and it's gonna blow our budget sky high, especially if they have to do upfront charges to put poles in, and that kind of stuff. So, Tom asked me to present this. What we'd like to do is, this is for discussion, but we'd like to recommend that the city manager approve lights based on the power companies, and we have three, their recommendation of indeed if the light's needed or not.
I'm concerned with... I'm waiting for a motion, second. I have something I'm gonna say, too.
Not gonna be a motion, as far as I, as far as I know, we're gonna discuss it.
They have a motion in here, but this is discussion only?
It's what it says on the agenda.
Tom prepared it, I just, I'm just presenting.
Yeah, I mean, I prepared a motion, if you want to do it.
Yeah.
We just need direction, because we've got multiple, and now that we've had the requests, we've had Jeremy start riding around at night some, and he's finding other areas where people haven't even brought them to our attention that need, in his view.
My concern is that typically, the power companies, as you've said, when you were discussing, they provide these in exchange for the monthly fee on the light. Why is it, Bobby, did they give you a reason why these are different, why these are gonna be from $1,300 to $2,000 upfront cost?
Well, they, they don't have, they don't have structural facilities in place to hang a light on. They have to put one in, and they won't do, they would do it for free, just to get the monthly light charge. They won't do that anymore. They charge you to install the structure.
We just did it at Pine Mountain, if I understand.
The Greystone? Yeah, for like, it was like $1,200 for Greystone.
To do the parking...
The place is a developed community. When they designed it, didn't they design lighting?
They were supposed to design lighting.
They did, but that's one of those subdivisions that the city did a terrible job on. We didn't...
The subdivision failed in the recession.
Did you say that out loud?
Gil, Gil, now, on a new development, on a new development, they, the developers required to pay a month, the monthly streetlight charges a year in advance, when the power company puts the lights in. That's, that's what I'm used to, but that's not what's been happening.
Tom, that you put a motion in here, but I think that what I would like to see is you come to us with a plan for how you would approach these lights. Like, if you had a staff member go out, and you determine, this is what criteria you would use to determine if you wanted to bring to the council, or if you wanted to spend out of some pre-budgeted amount, you know, for this light pole, or that pole, or, that's probably what I would like to see, some type of a...
Some type of a plan.
Some type of a policy. You know, we're policymakers. So, some type of a policy that you would use to, to fulfill these requests when they come in, because otherwise, if you're making a request, and we suddenly are gonna pay for it, that's gonna be, that's gonna get expensive quick, just like speed humps, before you know it. We want one every 10 feet.
One of the issues that I've discovered, we don't have a survey that's been conducted in the past of where all our lights are. You know, it's, it's easy to put lights on a map and say, oh, well, you know, there's 400 feet, we don't have a light on. We don't have any of that. And we really need to do that, citywide.
Somebody ought to have that.
I wasn't surprised, because we don't know where our water lines or sewer lines are.
But that's different.
At least we can see the lights, so...
Yeah.
We're getting close, though.
They're underground.
Well, you know, we found, we found a street yesterday, or last night, didn't have a single light on it. You know, that, that just doesn't, that's not supposed to happen.
I like Councilmember McDougal's suggestion, and it's written on here. You added to it.
Before we leave this, I mean, I think it is important to have a policy before you start approving any type of expenditure, but it, I think all this was intended to do is let them call the power companies and start gathering the information, so that you could form a policy.
Also, go out and pay the lights, find out what we got.
Well, it troubles me that you want to ask for the recommendation from the very people you would then be paying to put the work in.
They, they at least have the technology and the experience to design the plan. We don't, I don't know that we got, we have anybody on staff with a lick of experience in doing anything better than driving out there at night and going, well, this looks dark. I mean, you know, I mean, you know, that's about as deep as we're gonna get, I'm afraid.
And, and you know, it's important...
They must have a formula.
It's, they do. They have, they have, they have lighting standards they go by. It's, they do, they have, they have, they have lighting standards they go by. It's also important to have a staff person once every three months or so drive your city at night and flag the lights that are out.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're paying for them whether they're burning or not.
We do that.
Well, and when you go to the power company, they go out and change, right?
Yes, sir, we're working on that.
Okay.
Well, and it helps for citizens to be alert, that's how I found out. I would go out, you know, they'd call me and tell me it was out on their street or whatever, and then the city would flag it.
So...
Ms. Bell, we don't do, this is not like a public comment or something, I'm sorry. I want to acknowledge that you do have a question or concern, but the council will hopefully make a decision here in a minute that I think you'll be happy with.
I like at least a piece of this, so I'm going to make a motion out of it. But I, I do want there to be a policy. I move that we authorize the city manager to use the recommendation of our electric service providers to determine the need for additional street light, meaning that you would then make the determination based on their recommendation, not that you would be required to do it.
Hey, Bobby, let me ask you a question. It seemed like recently or last year sometime, they started swapping out the lights to LED lights. Is that still going on?
They're complete, they're complete, but they didn't get you anything. We, we've got, we've got an area along West Wilson Street and along the Main Street where we have the tandem acorn post top lights. Those were city bought and paid for back when they were installed. Those were not upgraded to LED. So Georgia Power's working on a price quote for us to update that to new fixtures. And we're hoping that it will just be a slight increase in, in the monthly fee for those lights.
I thought, when they were redoing the lights, that it was on them to redo them, but we were getting a benefit because of using a lot less power, because we pay for the power.
That is correct, on, on the LED changeout that they came in. The standard street light went from high-pressure sodium 100 watts to the new LED standard. And we found two on West Wilson that are pretty close to the salon that didn't get swapped out, and we're working on getting that done. But while we were there, we were talking to the Georgia Power guy, and he said, I said, well, you didn't update these? He said, those were bought by the city. I said, well, why didn't you go ahead and update? Well, it's an extra charge, and I'm like, well, work up a, so they're working on that.
Is that only two of them? You say just two?
No, there's two that they, the, the standard LEDs that they forgot to swap out. But these, there's probably 40 of these tandem post acorn tops.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two?
Mr. Mayor, this one is for discussion too, but I think Tom's got a motion on here. We, back some months ago, we discussed the issues we're having in three developments and parts of Mirror Lake with the trees that were planted, within the three developments, they're planted in the beauty strip between the sidewalk and the curb. I have met with the HOA of Reed Plantation to discuss those trees and the fact that they're pushing, those roots are pushing up sidewalks causing trip hazards. And Reed Plantation has several of the largest trees that we've got in question. Since the city allowed those trees to be installed back in the day, which was a bad decision, I came up with, with an idea with that HOA, and I said, look, okay, we've got to take these trees out, the ones that are pushing up sidewalks, because somebody's going to get hurt, city's going to be liable, we're going to have a problem. I said, but we can't come out and take the sidewalk section out, grind the roots down, pour it back, and then next year- So I said, we want it, the trees that are on, along the boulevard that are causing sidewalk issues, we want to take that tree out completely. Take the sidewalk up, fix it back, sod it back, done. And I said, I would recommend that the city would give you a tree back to plant behind, at the 13-foot right-of-way line, if you want a tree back, at the city's expense. A lot of homeowners don't want trees, in fact, some of them have been cut already. But we've got to take care of those trip hazards in those subdivisions, because somebody's going to get hurt and they're going to sue us. Met with an arborist, took him to Mirror Lake, took him to all three of these subdivisions, got his input on what can we do, is there anything we can do? Basically, there's not, other than remove the tree. We talked about alternative golf cart path materials to minimize the root protrusion. There's not, there's not a good answer to that. But back to the neighborhoods, I asked him to give me a five trees that we could offer, a selection that we could offer these homeowners to put back if they so desired a tree. Tom brought this today, and we, we just, we just finalized this thing out. I met with him last week. That you've got in the, in your cover sheet, lists the five tree selection and the size that he, that he recommended. Tom and I've talked, and, you know, some of these trees are pretty expensive. I'd like to offer some kind of hybrid version of what we, you know, if, if we go forward with this, you know, the city pays so much, the customers pay so much if they want a tree put back, that kind of thing. We've got, right now, we've got 12 tree plantations that are causing problems right now. And there's probably that many in Berkeley Park as well. So that being said, we, we, we just, you know, offer for discussion what y'all's thoughts are. But Greystone Power is working on a price quote to offset some of the street lights that are in the middle of the trees along Connor's Road and Mirror Lake Parkway. You know, who plants, who plants a tree right next to a street light pole? I mean, you, you just, you know, that was great years ago, but now it's... In the summertime. So we're working about six different areas on the tree thing.
You, you mentioned three, you said three a couple of times in here, and you said Reed Plantation, Berkeley, and Mirror Lake. Those are...
Well, no, actually, the three, the three single-family subdivisions are Berkeley Park, Reed Plantation, and Townsend Village off of Daniel Road. Now, they have like a half, probably eight trees total in there. But these other two have trees everywhere. There's probably 100 and something trees in Reed Plantation. And we, we, we don't want to go in and just strip them all out. If they start to cause a problem, then we deal with it. And they were, they were...
So this doesn't even address the ones on Connor's Road?
No, we, those are different... Same subject, different, different circumstance.
Well, my memory is that's how this came up, was the...
Yes.
The discussion of getting an arborist several months back-
Yes.
-because of the danger on that path on Connor's Road.
The arborist says that tree roofs are pushing up the asphalt. You have two options, you take the tree out, or you take the asphalt out and put something like gravel or something in its place that we can give with the root system as it grows. And, you know...
Well, my concern is, and David, you might speak to this, whether or not you offer some allowance or replace these trees, there is a real safety issue.
Yeah.
And it's been highlighted in these public meetings on multiple occasions.
Yep.
So regardless of what you need to do, that issue needs to be resolved, whether a tree goes back or not. But that ravine, as you come around that curve in Connor's Road-
Yep.
-is incredibly dangerous, and I don't see anybody putting another tree back there because there isn't two feet between that and the ravine. So that needs to be...
Well, we could certainly take those out, but we, we all know what it's going to do to the flavor of that boulevard if we do that, which...
Yeah, Bobby, I was going to ask you, I mean, has anybody looked to see whether or not these trees are actually in the road right-of-way or not? Because if, if they are actually in the road right-of-way, I think it's within our power to remove them. That's a decision of the city to make.
All the ones in the residential subdivisions are way inside the right-of-way. They're like two feet behind, well, a foot and a half behind the curb. Some of the ones on Connor's are probably either inside the right-of-way or they're on the... Because we're talking about oak trees now on Connor's Road that are like trunks like this. I mean, they were planted, what, '97, '98, '99? Now, they're mature trees.
And, and the question I have is that, you know, does it make sense to replace, I mean, to be paying to put new trees in public right-of-way?
We're not going to put them in the right-of-way if we replace them.
That's why I think a lot of people may not take them, because if I'm thinking of Reed Plantation, they're in that little green area on this side of the sidewalk, aren't they? That little, it's going to put it right in their yard, and they like, everybody likes it driving down the road, looking at it, but having it in the middle of the road...
It's going to put those new trees probably seven to eight feet behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, right in the middle of the yard.
I'm going to support a motion that would, and this is, I guess, still a discussion, but that would have the city manager remove the offending trees, but then do a hybrid of the replacement, where the property owner who chooses to have it replaced would pay half, and the city would, would pay half. Because I do think there probably are people who will be displaced by the removal of some of these trees that have been there for years. I do think also, Councilwoman McPherson is correct, that very few people are going to take us up on that offer.
Bobby, you've got two prices associated with each tree. What are these two prices?
These are purchased prices of the trees, not install prices.
The first is install price. The second one's install price.
Okay.
Councilwoman McDougal, that was a motion to make, right?
I'll make that into a motion, let me...
I'm going to ask a question before you, before you make the motion. I, I think that this, this is an issue that we need to look at, because essentially what you're talking about is, is entering into an agreement with every affected property owner, which is almost in the nature of a condemnation action, take, taking, I mean, we're saying that they have some right to decide if it's their tree or not. And I would take the position as your attorney that they don't really have the right to tell us we can't cut down the tree.
Because it's on right-of-way.
I certainly can agree with that as well. I just would like for the city manager to have some leeway to, to mitigate that concern by the property owner. I, I understand that, that we have the right to do it, but just because we have the right to do it doesn't necessarily mean we should, and maybe we just simply say, use your best judgment.
The purpose of bringing this wasn't to ask you if we have the right to take it down.
Right.
If I had just said to Bobby, tell Jeremy to go cut down all these trees all over Villarica-
He'd have screamed at me.
-without telling y'all about it and without...
I probably did.
That would not have gone well. The point of this is to propose to you some kind of reparation so that the few folks that want a tree, we participate. Because it doesn't appropriate to me that they would be responsible for that entire expense. We're the ones that allow the trees in the beauty strip to begin with. And in the case of Reed and Berkeley, it was the same developer.
I would say I'm 100% thought. What I am concerned about is the unintended consequences of establishing a policy that might come into play with some other situations that we don't even see or understand right now.
I would certainly like to know how much it's going to cost us to do this kind of deal, buying trees, and how many are out there, how many? What are we up against here, how much money?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about 30, 30 trees right now between the three neighborhoods.
I would like for you to, similar to-
That's not budgeted.
The, the street lights, I'd like there to be a policy for this, where you would give the owner a 30-day notice or 15, or whatever, except in conditions where it's a safety issue that needs to be mitigated immediately. So maybe if you could come up with a policy for it, and then some idea of what we would be spending on it. But I'm of the opinion that these things have to be done regardless of whatever the budget number turns out to be. In some cases, it has to be done. It's, it's not going to be a question. There may be, and that's where a policy would help us to define that. So would that be something you'd be able to do, come up with some type of a policy that would allow us to...
Well, current policy is, the only thing we've got is, is what we've got existing in the system now. Yeah, we can, you know, we can, my first pass was to, we're going to take them all out.
Yeah, well, that, going forward, that, that works, Bobby, but it, it doesn't, that policy doesn't resolve what we're talking about. Going forward, sure.
Yeah.
Which takes me back to codes enforcement that I talked about at the very beginning. So let me withdraw my motion, and I, I, I'm not sure that I have a motion other than a direction that you would come up with a policy and come back.
Yeah, and I would like an estimate, or at least a pretty good number as to what we're talking about here if we start doing this as far as...
We can get you a finite number based on the, the trees that are causing a problem right now, yeah.
Basis, too.
And how many items can we actually just go ahead and take out, just about all of them, right?
That's why we're talking about it, yeah.
And real quickly, just taking into mind that this is going to put us on people's private property putting in trees, and that's going to have to be taken into consideration.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on that, the tree issue? Okay, we are going to go into executive session. David, you want to lead us?
Yes, the plan is, there's a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing future acquisition of real estate and for the purposes of discussing or deliberating employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a public, public officer or employee.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion second, all in favor? We are in executive session.